Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the February 9th Cabarrus County Board of Education meeting. We'll call that meeting to order. First order of business is for us to observe a moment of silence. Recently, we just lost a very, very valuable employee, student, leader, a teacher assistant of a lot of value to the folks at Beverly Hills. And I wish you, if you would just join with me as we have a moment of silence for Susan Wilson. Thank you. All right, tonight, our opening ceremony will be the presentation of colors by the Central Cabarrus ROTC. And that group consists of the Cadet Lieutenant Lyric Sabillion, Cadet Sergeant Major Christopher I'd like to have a word of many thanks to our National Anthem performed by the Mount Pleasant High School Band. The orchestra consisted of Cameron Beaver, Cody Harrison, Nick Carl, Evan Morris, and Hank Jackson. Thank you for your presentation. Tonight, our SRO in attendance to help protect us is Keith Drake, the SRO over at Bethel Elementary. And thank you for coming out tonight, Officer Drake. Board members, I'd like to set the agenda, so I'll need a motion to accept the agenda as written. Is there a motion?
A motion.
Mr. Harrison?
A second.
And a second by Mr. Walter. All in favor of the motion as written, I mean, as the agenda as written, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. None opposed. That's unanimous. Recognitions, impact through education. Ms. Ronnie Boone, if you would come forward, please.
Good evening. Tonight, for our Impact Through Education Awards, we will honor students and staff members from WM Irvin Elementary School and Harris Road Middle School. Before we begin, we always want to offer our thanks and gratitude to our friends at Concord Printing for making these awards possible and their sponsorship of the Impact Through Education Awards for us once again this school year. We'll begin tonight with our honorees from WM Irvin, and I'd like to invite any members of the Irvin Elementary Administrative Team to come forward at this time to stand with Our first honoree from Irvin this evening is Sarah Moran. Would Sarah and her family please come forward? Sarah Moran is a fifth grade student at WM Irvin Elementary School. She stands out as a young lady who makes an impact on others. Teachers and adults around her tend to ask her to be the one to read to younger students, mentor others, or lead groups of students because she is a model student. Sarah is active in sports, and she enjoys swimming, running, and hula hooping. She also enjoys crafting, such as bracelet making. Sarah also enjoys spending time with her friends. Sarah makes an impact at WM Irvin Elementary, on the WM Irvin Elementary community through her helpfulness and quiet leadership. Thank you, Sarah, for all that you do at Irvin Elementary, and congratulations on receiving this award. Our next honoree from WM Irvin Elementary is Jack Pruitt. Jack is also a fifth grade student at WM Irvin Elementary School. He is a young man who is at home in the limelight. Currently, he helps out announcing the Mount Pleasant High School Junior Varsity Football Games, where he enjoys being paid and food.[563.32][563.32](Laughter). He also is an anchor on the morning news at WM Irvin. Jack is quite sports-minded. He enjoys basketball and baseball most of all. He's involved in sports and his church youth group outside of school, and helps coach kids from his neighborhood and church in basketball. Jack makes an impact on the WM Irvin School community through his helpfulness, hard work, and talent. Congratulations, Jack, on receiving this award. Our next honoree from WM Irvin is Ms. Emily Francis. Ms. Francis has taught English as a second language for three years at WM Irvin Elementary School. Prior to that, she spent eight years as a teacher assistant. After earning a bachelor's degree in elementary education and recognizing a need for greater school support within the local Hispanic community, she furthered her education and earned a master's degree in English as a second language. Ms. Francis works tirelessly to bridge and close the cultural gap between the school and families from different backgrounds by teaching families about the culture of the school and teaching the school about the culture of families. Her coworkers say that Ms. Francis leads by example and is always willing to help and helps them better understand the families in their community. The impact of Ms. Francis's work is felt throughout the entire WM Irvin community. Thank you, Ms. Francis, for all that you do, and congratulations on receiving this award. And our final honoree this evening from WM Irvin Elementary is Ms. Christine Harrison. Would Ms. Harrison and her family please come forward? Ms. Harrison is a 22-year veteran of Cabarrus County Schools, and according to her peers, she is the glue that holds WM Irvin Elementary School together.[841.43][841.43](Laughter). While at school, Ms. Harrison has been known to do it all, from answering the phones and taking messages, to changing tires and jump-starting cars. The staff at Irvin agrees that there is no better person to be greeted by than Ms. Harrison. She always has a smile on her face, knows everything that is going on in the school, and is positive, friendly, and genuinely cares about students, staff, and families. Anyone who walks into the office at WM Irvin immediately feels the impact Ms. Harrison has had on the positive culture of the school. Thank you, Ms. Harrison, for all that you do, and congratulations. Next, we will honor students and staff with Impact Through Education Awards from Harris Road Middle School. I'd like to invite any members of the Harris Road Middle School Administrative Team to come forward at this time. You're by yourself tonight?
That's it.
Okay.[951.88][951.88](Laughter). Our first honoree from Harris Road Middle School is Chase Carter. Would Chase and his family please come forward? Chase is a charismatic eighth-grade student at Harris Road Middle School. Teachers describe him as an all-around great student who always goes the extra mile to help someone else. Chase exhibits the confidence, self-respect, responsibility, and overall calm demeanor in every action he attempts. Chase is conscientious of the needs of others, and as a result, his teachers recommended his membership in the Harris Road Middle School Peer Helpers Program. As a peer helper, he was a leader and helped with this year's Secret Santa program to run, help this year's Secret Santa program to run smoothly. Chase is an attention-to-detail kind of student who goes the extra mile to make sure his work is done and done well. Chase's character makes him deserving of the Impact Through Education Award, and we offer him our congratulations. Our next honoree from Harris Road Middle School is Olivia Rothgapp. Olivia is not here this evening because she is at a Beta Club State Convention in Greensboro, but her mother is here to accept the award on her behalf, so if Mrs. Rothgapp would please And I'd like to tell you all a little bit about Olivia and why she was selected for this award. Olivia is a dynamic eighth-grade student at Harris Road Middle School. Teachers describe her as an out-of-the-box thinker who excels in whatever she puts her mind to. Olivia is a silent leader amongst her peers. She models creativity, tenacity, good decision-making skills, and responsibility, all with humility. Olivia is always willing to lend a helping hand to others, whether it is working with her peers, volunteering at school, or assisting her classroom teachers. She does it all with a big, bright smile on her face. Olivia goes beyond what is expected of her to the point that her peers look at her in awe, and adults are captivated and astounded by her incredible work ethic. Olivia has a positive impact on everyone she encounters and is the ideal student to receive the Impact Through Education Award. We offer Olivia our congratulations and are pleased to present this award to her mother on her behalf. Our next Harris Road Middle School honoree is Mrs. Kim Murfit. Would Mrs. Murfit and her family please come forward? Mrs. Murfit is a vibrant seventh-grade English Language Arts teacher and the ELA Lead Teacher at Harris Road Middle School. She's been a teacher for 16 years and has taught elementary and middle school for 14 years in Cabarrus County Schools. Mrs. Murfit gracefully and effectively communicates expectations to teachers and at the same time assists them with concerns without becoming defensive or frustrated. She readily volunteers her time for individual student needs, as well as programs that benefit Harris Road Middle School as a whole. Mrs. Murfit tries to bridge the gaps between people and issues, and as a lead teacher, she teaches and works with other teachers by providing them with positive feedback, resources, and time in and out of school. Mrs. Murfit is a paragon of teaching, and her dedication to her students' intellectual growth and her unrelenting pursuit of self-improvement as an instructor and coworker are commendable. When asked about her philosophy of teaching, Mrs. Murfit stated, "Teaching is a privilege, a great responsibility, and it takes a partnership with schools, students, and families to help students be lifelong learners." Mrs. Murfit positively contributes to the school culture, serves as a model to her colleagues, and is making a lasting impact on education at Harris Road Middle School. Congratulations. And our final honoree this evening from Harris Road Middle School is Ms. Kimberly Waddington. Would Ms. Waddington and her family please come forward? Kim Waddington is the dedicated treasurer at Harris Road Middle School. Mrs. Waddington has been a treasurer for 13 and a half years in Cabarrus County Schools. The staff at Harris Road Middle School sum up Mrs. Waddington in one word: fantastic. Mrs. Waddington is always willing to take on extra responsibilities to allow teachers to focus on their students. One teacher said, "Mrs. Waddington has a total gift for not only doing her job with ease, but making it easy for the rest of us." Mrs. Waddington lights up each day with a bright smile, helpful nature, kindness, consideration, and overall good heart. Mrs. Waddington is a wonderful person who works with teachers and for teachers. As someone who deals with financial issues all day, she still manages to be helpful and has a smile for everyone she encounters. Mrs. Waddington is a part of what makes Harris Road Middle School a great place to teach and learn and makes a daily impact on education at Harris Road Middle School. Congratulations, Mrs. Waddington.
Next is our Hilbush Ford Teacher of the Month Award. Mr. Tim Vaughn, would you come to the podium along with Dr. Barry Shepherd and Ms. Glenda Jones?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. It is my honor and pleasure to present our February Hilbush Ford Teacher of the Month. As always, we extend our sincere gratitude and appreciation to Mr. Tim Vaughn and Hilbush Ford for their continued support and generosity in helping us recognize and reward our outstanding teachers. The Cabarrus County Schools Hilbush Ford Teacher of the Month for February is Ann Udi. Mrs. Udi, would you, your family, and any members of your school's administrative team please come forward? Ann Udi is third-grade teacher at Rocky River Elementary School. She was nominated for this month's award by a parent who wrote, "Ann Udi is wonderful. She goes above and beyond to connect with her students and fully understand all aspects of their lives. She makes a special effort to meet unique needs in her classroom and to make herself available to all students." Ms. Udi, on behalf of Cabarrus County Schools, thank you for all that you do to connect with your students and for recognizing their unique learning styles. Please allow Dr. Shepherd and Mr. Vaughn to present you with your awards. All right, and please go through, yes.
We'll now have the presentation of the Outstanding Marching Band Performance Award. Mr. Chris White, would you come to the podium, please?
I would like to invite members of the Mount Pleasant Band and staff to come forward, please. Good evening. I am privileged to be here with you tonight to recognize and celebrate the Mount Pleasant High School Band. Having already heard them perform our National Anthem at this evening, presenting an award for excellence in performance will come as no surprise. Bands of America is a division of Music for All and hosts the most prestigious marching band championships in the activity. These regional and national-level championships combine in a single location the highest caliber marching bands and adjudicators. Therefore, competition between participating bands is tremendous. In November of 2014, several of our Cabarrus County marching bands participated in the Atlanta Super Regional held in the Georgia Dome in Atlanta, Georgia. Bands from 11 states competed, and I'm happy to report that Mount Pleasant, under the direction of Bart Tolbert and Keith Lee, placed second in Class A at this event. This is the first time in many years that we've had someone place at a class event, and it's a tremendous honor for our county. Performances add to a strong tradition of excellence exhibited by the current and the past Mount Pleasant bands. Mr. Tolbert and Mr. Lee are supported by the Mount Pleasant Band Boosters and Executive Board members Karen Lyerly, Wendy Serco, Chris Harrison, Marcia Morris, and Suzanne Boast. This year's drum major was Josh Adams. Tonight, we applaud these performances, and I'd like to present them a certificate which reads, "The Certificate of Achievement recognizes outstanding performance and achievement at the 2014 Bands of America Atlanta Super Regional. It's awarded to Mount Pleasant High School Marching Band, February 9, 2015. Please join me in congratulating these dedicated music educators, talented student musicians and performers, supportive band families, and the entire Mount Pleasant community. Congratulations." Congratulations."
I'll ask Dr. Barry Shepherd and Ms. Glenda Jones to come to the podium, and they will announce the Regional Principal of the Year.
Dr. Arbach, would you come on down, please? And please bring your family with you. All right, we just wanted to take a few minutes to recognize our Regional Principal of the Year, Dr. Adam Arbach. He's the principal at Wolf Meadow Elementary School, and we just recently announced, I think last week, we actually announced this honor for him, but he will now compete with seven other Regional Principals of the Year in the annual program sponsored by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction and Wells Fargo. Dr. Arbach's been served as a principal of Wolf Meadow Elementary School since 2011, and what's really great about all this, besides the fact that he is our Regional Principal of the Year, is the fact that this is the third time in just a few years that we have had that honor. In 2012, Hilda Bats was our Regional Principal of the Year, and in 2013, our former Lynn Reimer, principal, was also the Regional Principal of the Year. So, Dr. Arbach, we are excited about the journey that you're about to take, representing us at the state, and we know that you will do us well, so congratulations. Please go through and let the board congratulate you.
Dr. Chris Lauter, come to the podium, please, and announce the North Carolina DARE Officer of the Year.
And if we could ask Officer Keith Drake to step off duty and come up front for us? It's my pleasure tonight to recognize Officer Keith Drake as the North Carolina DARE Officer of the Year. He serves as the Resource Officer at Bethel Elementary School, and just in case you're not aware, the DARE acronym stands for Drug Awareness and Resistance Education. It's a 5th grade curriculum that is taught to 5th grade by our sheriff's deputies. Officer Drake was presented the award on January 8 at the Annual DARE Officers Association Conference at Atlantic Beach. The Officer of the Year winner is selected by the members of the North Carolina DARE Board. Officers are chosen based on their involvement in the program and their commitment to the education of children. Although DARE is an acronym for Drug Awareness and Resistance Education, officers who teach this program to elementary school children are also teaching the kids much more than just drug resistance. Deputy Drake, like so many others in this profession, doesn't feel like this is just a job. It's a calling that he takes great pride in being able to do. His principal, Kevin Blackburn, said about him, "Keith Drake has been a pillar of our community for years. It is only fitting that he serves the young children of his community. When one thinks of Keith Drake, they think of integrity, steadfastness, protection, education, and dare. He is a smiling face that they see each day as he visits throughout the building. He's been a resource for parents, students, and staff alike. We're proud to call him a member of the Bethel family. We are also very proud of Officer Drake. We want to say thank you for your hard work, and we're very proud that you're part of the Cabarrus County Schools family. Congratulations, though."
Dr. Shepherd's approaching the podium, and he's going to present the North Carolina School Public Relations Association Blue Ribbon Award.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. I am pleased tonight to share with you that our Public Relations Department has won several awards for excellence in communications from the North Carolina Public School, Public Relations Association, an organization defined to build support for public education through well-planned and responsible public relations. I'd like to invite Ms. Ronnie Boone to come forward at this time. Our Public Relations Department received Blue Ribbon Awards on January 30 at an event in Greensboro for outstanding communications work in the following categories, and I have plaques to prove for each of them. Electronic Media and Video: A Day in the Life of CCS Teacher of the Year, our very own, Allison Hahn. Electronic Media Magazine for the CCS Lookbook Spring 2014 and Fall 2014 Editions. And last, but not least, for the third consecutive year we've been recognized for this award, annual report for our 2012-2013. And with this year's awards, our department has received eight Blue Ribbon Awards in the past three years. We're very proud of Ronnie Boone and Mike Martin, and congratulate them on a job well done. Mike's got to help me hold them, so you're going to have to take a picture, don't he? That's all you got to do.
Just look through there, that's all you got to do. Just look through there and press the button.
Press the button.
Where's the button?
You wear black, mate.
I would have invited the family, but Ronnie's husband, Roger, is here tonight also. Thank you for being here.
All right, before we go to the approval of minutes, Board Members, I would like to recognize our new Independent Tribune reporter, Mr. Tim Reeves. He's here with us tonight for his first time, taking the place of our long-lost friend, Jessica Groover, and we'll miss her dearly, but Tim is here, and we're glad to have you aboard, Tim, and thank you for coming out and supporting us. Board Members, we're going to the approval of the minutes. We have a number of minutes to approve, so I'll start with the January 5 minutes, and are there any corrections or changes to those? Mr. Walter?
One very minor correction on page 2, I guess, third to last paragraph where it says, Dr. Lauter shared that this policy had been discussed at length at the December 2014 Committee Meeting to incorporate Mr. Walter's changes. I think they just considered them, they did not incorporate all my changes. So, change incorporate to consider? Change the word incorporate to consider.
Ms. Monroe, did you pick that one up? All right, do I have a motion to approve the minutes with Mr. Walter's change? Mr. Harrison, second?
Second.
Tim? I'm sorry. Vince, sorry. Vince did it. Vince Powell seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, next, January 12. Do we have any changes, or do I have a motion? David Harrison moves to approve. Tim Farr seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Finally, we have the January 24 minutes. Any discussions? Need a motion?
So moved.
Jeff Phillips moves.
Second.
David Harrison seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right. The minutes are approved, and we can now move on to 7.1, which is our Board Chair Comments. And I will pass on gladly to Dr. Shepherd and let him go on with his comments.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, let me start by saying, last week, the annual school report cards were released, and we've spoken about those quite a bit over the past few months, but this is the first time this has ever happened. We spent, like I said, a significant amount of time talking about that, and you've heard my thoughts. I just want to encourage our viewers to review the information, not just the score, but all of the school report card information that's available on the NC report cards posted on our district website. Also, let me announce that tonight, our tonight preschool registration is underway for the 2015-16 school year. Programs are available for eligible students who are 3 or 4 years old and live in Cabarrus County School District. Children must be 3 or 4 years old, depending on the program, on or before August 31, 2015. And for more information or to apply, please contact the Head Start Department at Long School, and I'll give you the telephone number, 704-784-3614, or the Cabarrus Partnership for Children, and that number is 704-262-3683. I also want to congratulate our new National Board Certified Teachers. 17 teachers were recently received that for the first time, and another eight successfully renewed their national certification. Very proud of them. Cabarrus County now has a total of 263 National Board Certified Teachers. Also, congratulations goes out to Wolf Meadow Elementary School. The school's Edible Garden Club received a $4,240 grant from Lowe's Toolbox for Education to purchase a greenhouse for the school campus, and if you go by during the spring and summer, and I'm sure even during the winter, there's always something to eat in that great garden, and this will enhance that program. Also, let me say that students are invited to participate in the 5th Annual Future Designer Contest sponsored by Ellis Jewelers in our downtown Concord. Three winners will be selected to have the jewelry that they design created into a one-of-a-kind piece jewelry. The deadline for entries is April 15. Details and contest rules are found on our website at www.cabarrus.k12.nc.us. Also, last week, we observed National School Counseling Week, and I'd like to say thank you to all of our counselors who provide a much-needed resource to our students, parents, teachers, and administrators. This month is also, we celebrate bus drivers with the annual Love the Bus Campaign. We thank our dedicated bus drivers and other transportation personnel who ensure that our students travel to and from school safely every day. And finally, I want to remind parents that student report cards for the second quarter and first semester will be available online or sent home this Wednesday, February 11. And also, schools will be closed on Monday, February 16, for the President's Day holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. We have guest speakers. This is our guest speaker portion, and guest speakers may be scheduled on the agenda of the Board's business meeting by calling the Board Clerk at 704-262-6238 by 12 noon on the Friday prior to the business meeting. Individuals addressing the Board may speak for three minutes, and persons representing a group may speak for five minutes. The Board of Education would like to thank our guests for their interest in addressing the Board and also for their cooperation in presenting information within the timeframe allotted. The following guest speakers have requested to address the Board at this time. Our first speaker is Mr. Price Crutchfield. Mr. Crutchfield is here. Would you please come forward? Well, Mr. Crutchfield was unable to attend. Mr. Matt Metzger, if you'll come forward, please, sir?
Hello, Matt Metzger. I'm an economics professor, and I'm here tonight to talk about the report card format in Cabarrus County Schools. As a parent to a 1st grader, I've received the report cards, and I'm just a little concerned about the information, the way it's presented to the parents. This time, when I got the report card, I actually counted, and there's 55 different aspects a child is assessed on. And to me, that seems a little excessive and also a little questionable that all of those 55 elements could be assessed properly. In other words, if you had a class of, say, 20, 55 times 20 is over 1,000, and so it'd be hard for me to understand that a teacher could produce over 1,000 valid data points every quarter that she would either collect or produce. And so, that's one of my concerns, is that it's a little too much information and not that much meaningful content to a parent. What I would recommend is, I would ask the Board if they'd consider cutting down on that number and making it a little more narrative-based, providing a little more comments and things like that. If a teacher's going to spend that time producing 1,000 data points, that's a lot of time anyways. I would rather have that time spent in paragraph form, something written about the student that would be, again, more understandable to the parent. When we see all these data points, you know, the 55 things, as a parent, how much stock are you putting into it if you know, again, it's kind of questionable that it'd be possible to produce all of that amount of data in a quality way? Some of the standards themselves seem a little questionable to me as far as the extent, like one of them says, "Understand basic economic concepts." I'm not really sure that's appropriate for a 1st grader. I teach that in college, and I don't always get it right, so I'm having a hard time believing that a 1st grader could be assessed on it properly. So I think cutting some of those kind of lesser ones, focusing on the more important ones, and providing more space. Again, if a teacher's spending all this time collecting these numbers and putting them in, it's much less time and much space on that report card for comments. That's really what I think is meaningful to most parents, that's what's meaningful to me, and I just hope the Board would take that under consideration for future work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Metzger. Appreciate it. Our Board Members, we have before us the consent agenda. I'll need a motion to approve the consent agenda as we have it outlined here. Mr. Harrison, do I have a second to this?
Second.
Tim Farr? Sorry, Jeff. All in favor of approving the consent agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? All right, so the motion carries 7-0. The consent agenda is approved, and now we can go into our action agenda. Our first action agenda item would be the roofing project contracts. If Mr. Chuck Taylor would come forward, and I would stop stumbling.
Good evening, sir. In regards to the roof contracts, as we discussed them last week, I was asked to negotiate with the consultants and move forward with getting your price, and we've done that. They've been reviewed by Mr. Kim Michaels, Board Attorney. The contracts have been completed. You do have them available to you. And we allotted that we would not exceed And we allotted that we would not exceed an amount of $400,000. The contracts actually came in at 261. So, I feel that we're in very good shape as far as the percentages and what we're allotting for the design and bidding. And with that, I would like to ask that you give great consideration to approval of this. If you do, I am prepared to start immediately, as in tomorrow, I have the consultant lined up to start doing measurements.
Hi, board members. Are there any questions for Mr. Taylor? Oh, Ms. Carolyn Carpenter.
Okay, just one quick question. I'm seeing metal roofing. Now, are you doing metal? What was that with metal roofing? You're doing that just on northwest?
Northwest metal, ma'am.
Okay, that's the only one we're doing, the metal?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to reconfirm that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I would make a motion that we approve the contract for the roofing. Roofing, the, the?
Yes, ma'am.
For all of them.
Okay. So, Ms. Carpenter makes a motion to approve all of the contracts for the roofing design? Is there a second?
I'll second that, but this is going to allow you to add additional roofs? Is that your anticipation now? Or you don't?
That's what we hope to, sir. What we're going to do, we're having the metal roof bid out by a separate consultant. The consultant is doing the single membrane roofs. We talked the day after the last board meeting. And our strategy is to go ahead and bid out the first two because he can go ahead and get the drawings completed and out to bid. We'll see what that pricing comes in at and then we'll have a second round once we know how much funding is left and available.
Just get the biggest bang for your buck.
Every dollar we can, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so this motion that Ms. Carpenter made is for the roofing project contracts with the consultants? And if there's any more, is there any more discussion? If there's not, board members, let's go to a vote. All in favor of approving the roof contracts for the consultants? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Next on the agenda is approval of site, program, and design of Royal Oaks Elementary School replacement facility. Mr. Dave Burnett has come to the podium. Mr. Burnett?
Yes, thank you. And as we discussed last week, the superintendent's recommendation is for a 400-student core-capacity school on the same site and to continue to utilize the design team of, that's working on Odell and use that prototype. And that would be Mosley Architects. And happy to entertain any questions.
Board members, are there questions, comments on the Royal Oaks replacement design? Who would like to speak first? I will interject before we get started. I did, Dr. Shepherd and I attended a meeting with Mike Downs and with Steve Morris, the chairman of the commissioners, this afternoon to talk about several topics. This, Royal Oaks was one of the topics. They are inclined to believe that we should probably go for a little bit larger school than the 400 and, but we've had to couch the discussion with the Mount Pleasant project. And if you just take this project alone, it's up to us as to what we want to build, but they feel like we would get better bang for our buck if we were to go to a larger school. Of course, we have some, we have some issues with timing on money and that is one of the bigger issues that came out of our discussion was right now, they do not have the funding all lined up for all of the projects because it's not only our Mount Pleasant project or our Rose, Royal Oaks project, but there's also the Kannapoli City Schools, Middle School or Intermediate School project. So, they're trying to now assess what they're going to do with all of those projects. Also, I forgot to admit, the RCCC, Rowan Cabarrus County Community College Project. So, those projects are all going to be presented to them by Mr. Downs and his staff and they have got to make some decisions about the capital and the way they're going to handle the capital in the future. So, at this point, we're not pressed for a decision on the Mount Pleasant. And when we go to that piece of the discussion, then we can talk about the merits of the project, but we don't have to make a decision on that tonight. But the Royal Oaks project, we're still firm on trying to have our design work done and our bids in hand by March of 2016. And in order to do that, we do have a fairly tight timeline. And with those comments being made, I'll now open the floor up for some discussions from the group because I know this has been a very hot topic in our emails all week long and I know a lot of you have done a lot of reading and have a lot of comments and thoughts. So, I'll turn it over to the first person who'd like to speak.
Just that I'm very, very gratified that the, at least the chairperson of county commission is of mind to allow us to have a larger school. We'll see what that means in time, but I hope that's an indication of a good partnership and a visionary approach to schoolwork between the school board and the county commissioners. Sounds like very good news.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Any other comments?
Well, as many of you have spelled out, as we've had conversations over the past couple of weeks, spending $17 million for 400 seats is not something that I want to go into without lots of the, at least attempting to try to find other paths. And I know maybe that's happened prior to me being on the board and maybe in the fall or in the summer or something like that, but I'm not privy to it, the details of that right now. So, that's kind of, if they want us to build a bigger school, I agree with them. I think, I'm not so sure that site is going to be optimal for a school much bigger than 400, given the fact that we'd have to close it and then move those children somewhere else and then build the school for two years and then move them back. I don't, I don't know what that would look like. I don't really want to know what that would look like. But that's kind of the dilemma that, you know, I've spoken with several of you about over the last week or two weeks.
Does anyone else have comments that they want to make? Oh, Jeff, yes, sir, I'm sorry.
So, so last week, Mr. Burnett, I was suggesting that one possibility to reduce cost would be to use the existing K-1 building in the, as the K-1 wing in a new Royal Oaks, since that building is, I think, was built in the 1990s, just had a new roof on it. Have you done any back-of-the-envelope calculations to judge whether that's a penny wise, pound foolish idea or whether it would actually provide some savings and if so, how much?
Well, I guess probably the major thing to look at is what was discussed and promised to the Royal Oaks community. The, if you are adding on to that building, you know, is that going to be consistent with their understanding of, you know, what's coming their way? As I think I've heard in the past, you know, we've talked about a new school. So, what you would see from Dakota Street is you'd see the 1998 building, you know, followed by the addition. That's something that the board has to wrestle with and confirm that that's the message that they want to send. Certainly, costs can be saved, you know, by reusing that building. However, there are other implications with that and certainly can't really calculate it yet because we need, you know, more information. You know, are we going to tear down the existing building, move the kids? Where, you know, onsite, is it a different site? The cost range right there is pretty significant. So, the sequencing of the work, certainly, if we're in staged construction, that'll add costs. So, yes, you'll save money on the, on the construction costs. You'll spend money on sequencing. You'll spend money on what to do with the children in the meantime. When we decide what the program is going to be, we'll be able to look at the site and see what we can do as far as the construction and sequencing the work. You know, are they able to stay on the same site? We might be able to make that work. But again, really, the first thing we need to know is what the program's going to be.
When you say the program, so what you're basically asking us is how many students do we want in the school?
Right. Is it 400 students, 600 students, 800 students?
And your opinion, that site will support how many students if we were to build a bigger school for that site?
Yeah, I get nervous when we're talking about 800 student, 800 slash 1,000 student school on that site. It's about 18 acres. Some dated, a dated way of looking at the site would be, you know, 10 acres plus 1/100 of the ADM. So, if you're looking at eight, if you're looking at 800 students, it'd be 18 acres that we would need of usable acres. And not all of the 18 acres is usable, just the way that the site is shaped and some of the features on that. So, really, a 600-student school, I think, is probably, probably going to be, you know, the maximum on that. Again, we'd have to study it, but that's my gut feel, is a 600-student school. 600 students works pretty nicely with a 100-student cohort, kindergarten, first grade, second, third, fourth, fifth.
Okay. Tim, Mr. Farr?
Yeah, I just got one question. Is there, if we build on that site, is it, is it almost guaranteed there's a disruption with the kids? Or is it, is that based on the size of the school as well? What would you?
I'd say there's going to be a disruption regardless. If we had a, what I'd say, a clean building site that doesn't impact any of the existing structures, you're still going to have an impact because the contractors and crews and the materials has to access that site. The building is up front and the new school construction would be behind it. So, there's going to be an impact regardless.
Well, I guess, let me clear myself. When I say disruption, I mean, would the kids have to go somewhere else?
It depends on whether we are on top of the existing building and demolishing, whether we're tying into the 1998 building or not. If that's a standalone building, which I've heard, you know, many times, I think that's, has been a stated preference, if that's a standalone building, it's cleaner. If we're out of all of the existing building, that's cleaner still.
When you, because we have done it before. When we did Wyancoff, the kids stayed there and we built the building behind it. It's been done.
Oh, yeah.
And they stayed where they were. And then we demolished afterwards. They were there, we didn't bother them, and we built it. And that looks to be about the same size site. So, we've done it.
Okay.
And they survived without any problem. So, it's been done. One of the things, and I'm going to stand firm on this. You don't shoot me down if you want to, I don't care. You know, the majority of this board have not been here. They haven't, they don't have the history. People's been promised and promised and promised. And I'll probably, I'll probably go to heads with a few of these guys and I don't care. I really don't. Because I know what's been promised and, and they've been promised and let down, promised, let down. And with this thing, I'm going to stand firm on it. You know, when, when something's been promised to somebody, I like to keep my word. And so, I am, I'm going to stand firm on it and I'm going to see it through. And so, I want to see it built. And again, I know how tight-knit that community has become and those peoples in that community's come. And I don't want to see it separated or split off or sent here or sent there. Kind of like the Odell, and I've mentioned it before and I'll say it again, it's similar to the Odell community. I can tell you right now, if you go out there and you start trying to tear those people apart, you know, I'm moving somewhere else. But it, and so, I want to see us try. I think maybe if we did do a 600, I don't know where we'd get the children because of the way the structure is. It'd be nice if we could, but two, you know, we've got so much money and we do have the time crunch. So, we've already seen what we're looking at, it's 17, and they don't know where they're going to get the 17 from. So, I'm realistic to say, okay, let's do what we've got. But if we could go six, I wouldn't say it's crazy. But we've got a time crunch and we've got to meet those time factors. And so, have we did, we have, at this point, we haven't did any kind of geo, I mean, any kind of engineering or anything.
We don't have the funding.
But I'm still saying, let's go with the site where we've got it because I went through the, looking for land out kind of near there and we had a heck of a time. And so, I don't know where any kind of land would even be and what we went through looking for the land for Odell. So, I know what that would be. And with the time crunch we've got, I don't think we've got the time. And I want to see it built and I want to see it built now.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Walter?
$11 million. What can, how many student school can you build for $11 million?
Well, it all goes back to the program. So, what we would, you have to work with, how big's the cafeteria going to be? How big's the gym? How big's the media center? How many bathrooms do we need? How many corridors do we need? I can't answer, you know, that question like that. $11 million is going to be a small school.
Right. That's what we're looking at is, on that site. Right now, there's what, 320 kids that go to that school? I don't know. I think, I'm a little confused. You have this, our Fannie Howie assessment, right? It says, "This school needs to be replaced." And I've been out there, Jeff's been taking pictures and showed pictures, it's, it needs replacement. I mean, it's, we need to replace the school, but we also have a study that says, we have another school that's right next to that school, well, adjacent boundaries, that also needs to be replaced. And you've got, now, where's my list of things that the study came out and said? And we're talking about Beverly Hills, which is built right around the same time. You had an FCI index of .59. Says, to address the, it also has inadequacy issues. Well, it has no ball field. The students don't have any ball field. The students don't have any basketball court. The students don't have any volleyball courts. There's inadequate space, it says, for administration, teacher areas, and storage. The administration area lacks restrooms. The counselor office lacks privacy. Media center is undersized, not adequate regarding reading zone space. The health office, the nurse office is inadequate. There's no music room. There's areas of that school that are not ADA compliant and lack of storage areas for instructional materials. If we build a bigger school that can combine both of these districts, probably in a different site, I think we address both issues, both of the top issues off of this study here. What I don't quite understand is we've spent some money on the study and it says, you know, to replace Royal Oaks is $11 million. What, replace Royal Oaks was what, $8 million? And then to replace Beverly Hills was nine? So, this is last year's data. You know, is that, what happened here with the Fannie Howie folks and their replacement?
Certainly have to look at the, at the data much closer to see what it was that they were proposing, what the square foot cost they were proposing, whether it's just replacing kind, whether it's expansions, whether it's, you know, a larger, a brand-new school.
I don't know if they have that in narrative or not, but.
Well, I'm looking at the sheet right now. It's got basically 43,000 square feet for the building. And they say it's sized for 328 students. So, that's, and they were using a unit cost of $141 per square foot. So, your estimate here is 67,000. So, it's about half again as much, a little bit more than 50% larger. And $158 per square foot versus 141, so you factored in inflation. So, that drives it. I guess what Fannie Howie didn't do was they didn't increase. I guess what Fannie Howey didn't do was, they didn't increase, include all of these, not off-site, but the non-building cost.
Yeah, it sounds like that is a building construction cost only, not a site, not an off-site cost.
Can we confirm all that from, with him?
We can.
And then my other aspect of that is the locate, just the generalized location of that school in the residential neighborhood, because if you're gonna increase the size of the school, that road is certainly not designed for that type of a student population. You're gonna have to have road improvements, probably even a light on 29. Those are expenses. There's really nowhere for students to go to fill that school. You can take some from Wyancoff, but Wyancoff doesn't really have an issue with overcrowding. We're not addressing that. You have issues with, you build a brand-new school and you have a lot of kids that are right across the street from that school, can't even go to that school. That doesn't sound right to me either. So I'm just not, I'm not thrilled on that site. I think we ought to at least take a little bit of time and look to see if there is a 25-acre site somewhere in the area between these two districts, and then get a new school for both these, these groups that has all the facilities that we offer at our other elementary schools. Thank you. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Carpenter.
I respect her opinion, but one thing, a bond was passed for Royal Oaks. It was not passed for Beverly Hills. That money is there for Royal Oaks. That's the big difference there, Mr. Walters. It would be different if there was two bonds that were passed, and it was overwhelmingly passed for Royal Oaks. That's the big difference. And that money, that $11 million was passed for that. That's where your difference is. Now, if there'd been a bond passed for that, I'd say, fine, yay yay. Or if we would've went out for that. And that's why we've got the crunch for this. We got that $11 million, we got a timeframe here that we've got, and those people deserve that. And that's where the big difference. All right, well, you've got another small school. You've got A.T. Allen that's really old, that's downtown, that's small, you've got Coltrane Webb. Why don't you combine those two, if you wanna combine two, and build one? Why don't you combine those two and build that one and put those two together? You got a couple other small schools like that.
Carol, we're trying to address with the best amount we have. And what we approved is, we approved a replacement for Royal Oaks vicinity is what we asked, what we had asked for.
But you got that $11 million, and that was voted on by the people.
That was my earlier point, we can't build the school for $11 million.
Well, but you're trying to, you're trying to combine two things that, like I said, we haven't passed those two bonds. And that bond was passed by, and it was a very large margin. Keep that in mind.
Carolyn, A.T. Allen, which one did you mean?
You meant Arbrown.
Arbrown. Excuse me, Arbrown McAllister, not A.T. Allen. Excuse me.
Well, Mr. Chair, if I can just ask one clarifying question.
Mr. Harrison, you may ask a question.
Mr. Burnett, with the current plan for 400 student capacity on the current site, and if we went up to approximately 600, as earlier discussions were going into or speculating or going into those possibilities, could we, and this is an open-ended question, I don't mean to come across a yes or no, but could we feasibly, I don't wanna quite say guarantee, but pretty closely assure the Royal Oaks current district that either of these plans would open their doors at approximately the same date? I guess what I'm saying is, if we talk about 400 and we're expecting to open August of 2017, is that correct? And if we went to a larger school, as the county commissioners are implying, that might be a feasible approach from their perspective. Either way, and I'm trying to lead up to, Ms. Carpenter, is your earlier points, and hope I'm adding to them, could we open either of these options at the same, on the same timeline so that Royal Oaks gets the new facility that they more than deserve? But if we go up from 400 to 600, would that change the possible schedule of opening doors of Royal Oaks?
I think most likely, they would be on the same schedule. The only difference would be if we're on the borderline at 400 of impacting the existing school, and we wanted to keep them functioning and on the same site, and we missed it at 400, but at 600, we had to get into it, you know, certainly that could impact it.
And I'm not trying to weigh in either way about this side or that side, or A or B, that kind of thing, but in terms of the actual design of from 400 to 600, you feel like we could stay on the same schedule?
Yes.
And open up school about approximately the same date for either approach? So, or is it fair to say that something is in sight for Royal Oaks in the very near future with all these discussions? I mean, we certainly wanna move forward, I just want some reassurances that they're gonna get what they have been waiting for, for way too long, whether it's 400 or 600 in its capacity.
Yes, we certainly will be delivering on our end everything that you all are asking for.
But it's feasible?
Yes.
To be on the same schedule?
Yes.
Thank you.
Dr. Phillips?
Okay. Well, I mean, I have sympath, I have, I could lead either way. I could vote with Carolyn because I agree with her that they've been waiting too long at Royal Oaks and we should've been doing this years ago. And I could agree with Rob that, man, that's a lot. Given all of the other needs that we have in the district, we really need to spend our money cost-effectively when we add new schools. I think what I'm struggling with the most, though, is I don't see the full plan for how do we address all of the older schools that are in the center of the county, and Carolyn mentioned, so it's Arbrown McAllister, it's Coltrane Webb, it's Beverly Hills, and it's Royal Oaks. And I think eventually, we also have to address Wolf Meadow, but it's maybe 10 years younger than, or so, 20 years younger than the other two, or the other four. So what I'm struggling with is to, I can't make a decision on what's the best thing for Royal Oaks without understanding what's the best thing for the entire center core of our district. And so, it may well be that putting a 400-student school at Royal Oaks is the best solution, and that we address the other schools that are in Concord by combining schools. But I would like to see a more comprehensive plan first. I can't figure out what piece goes in the Royal Oaks spot until I know what the other pieces are in the puzzle.
It sounds as though, really, we need to discuss at some later date, the 10-year plan and get the reaction, you know, from the 10-year plan comments and incorporate those, because that's really what you're talking about.
Yeah, it really is. I mean, you know, the 10-year plan had a lot of information in it and particularly helped us understand the challenges that we're facing with growth. Unfortunately, I think that the challenges of how do we address equity in our older schools is an equally challenging problem and needs, you know, a considerable amount of study as well. Yeah, so I don't know what it would take to do that, but I think what we, what's missing here is, all right, well, if we, you know, if, you know, option one, replace Royal Oaks with a 400-student school, done. What do we do with the other ones? And then option two is, build an 800-student school somewhere that is in the Royal Oaks, Beverly Hills area that takes care of those two schools. Well, then what do we do with Coltrane Webb and Arbrown McAllister? And so, I wanna know all of those answers before I can say, yes, this is the right solution for Royal Oaks. But also mindful of what Carolyn's saying, we need to, we need to get on to this quick. I don't want this to be a year-long study. They've been waiting too long to replace that school at Royal Oaks.
Quick question, Tim.
And you know, Carolyn makes good points about the bond. Now, I may have to get reeducated on this. Now, who initiates the bond? The county? The county did, right? Or the school board initiated it, and the county? Okay. And we got that for Royal Oaks, for 400 students, correct? Or whatever?
No.
Didn't specify.
We didn't specify.
Okay.
In fact, where we originally went, I believe we were asking for something like 17 or 18 million. And they questioned, well, why do you need that much? That's what you were asking for almost, for a 1,000-student Odell. And I think the answer was, well, we think that it would be better to have a larger school of maybe 800, because that'd be more cost-effective. And it was at that point that the commissioner said, well, that's too much money. Here, we'll put 11 million on the ballot.
Mr. Powell?
Also, at that point, there wasn't really a discussion about combining schools as well. It was really just centered around Royal Oaks. The discussion about the 800 being for more than just Royal Oaks was not in the picture. Yeah, that's right.
Actually, the discussion was around surge capacity, and that was the center of our discussion during all of the conversations, was because we knew we had inner-city school problems. I say inner-city in Concord and Kannapolis area. So we knew that we had those issues, and we were trying to build a school large enough that we could begin chipping off the older schools one by one and begin doing renovations or whatever seemed to be fit. At that time, we didn't have a strategic plan, and we still have a gap in the strategic plan, as Dr. Phillips has noted. But the strategic plan, as it's been given to us, has not been approved at this point. We've been mulling it over. Board members, we're at a very delicate crossroad. The commissioners understand the need for a larger school at Royal Oaks. The commissioners also understand that they gotta, they have to come up with the monies to not only support the Royal Oaks, but the Mount Pleasant one, as we'll get ready into discussion with that. Part of the reason the 400 discussion came up was because of the initial cost estimates that we got on the Mount Pleasant school. And we weren't sure if the commissioners were going to wanna try to build a 700 to 800 person or student Royal Oaks school and try to deal with the Mount Pleasant middle school as it was. And so, Dr. Shepherd and I kinda promoted this 400 to thinking that that might be middle ground. In talking to Mr. Morris and Mr. Downs, they are supportive of a larger school. If we look at what we could possibly put on that site, Mr. Burnett, do you think we could put a 700 school, a 700-student school on that particular site? Up to, I mean, just pushing the limits?
That certainly is pushing the limits. We would, I would much rather study that than to tell you. Earlier this evening, I said I was, that feeling was 600 students, you know, I thought that that was doable, 700 is pushing it.
Okay. So in that regard, let me continue. Yeah, in that regard, one of the big issues that we have is on March 16th, March 2016, we have to have a bid document in hand, or this school will not open in the 2017-18 school year. So that means that we will lose another year if we dilly-dally around and try to wait for an incomplete plan. I think that we're in a position where we can begin chipping off portions of the plan with the commissioners working with us and address this school. The options of looking for more land, the issues that we have with that corridor that we're looking for land in, let's just say, the Copperfield area and that northeastern part of Concord, is that most of that is commercial property. So it's gonna come with a very dear price to us and to the county, so you're gonna pay a lot of extra money. Dr. Phillips made a comment at our, at our board retreat about one of the options in the strategic plan, and the difference between one option and another was several hundred million dollars, and he said, I can buy a lot of transportation for several hundred million dollars. Well, if we have to pay additional $2 or $3 million on just purchasing a piece of property, not counting the site issues associated with it, and most of the land in that area is vertically challenged, to say the least, and we haven't done any geotechnicals, but we could, we could end up spending a vast amount of money trying to make the site worthy of the school. We do have a site that's worthy of a school right now with Royal Oaks. We could, Mr. Burnett has told us that he could support a 600-student school at that site, and that would even be leaving the pre-K or leaving the K2 building alone, so we could still have students at that site and build a new school, and then remove all of the old vestiges of the old school and keep the K2 school. So I think there's some options available to us that if we, if we can just get some decisions on the programming, then I think we could move forward with that. Also, I think while we are doing the geotechnicals, if we could find other land that's even cheaper, I think we could look into that, but I believe that we need to make, we need to put a line in the sand and get started with this project, or it will be 2018-19 before this school gets built. And that's gonna be in the way of several other big projects. As you know, we need a large school out in the southern part of our county, in the Harrisburg area. And so, you know, there's other fish to fry, and we don't wanna just have everything coming online at the exact same time. I think that's gonna be very stressful for our county and for our ability to manage the projects. So I'm trying to stimulate some thinking here and get your opinions.
Are we having a joint meeting with the county commissioners in a couple weeks, right? Can we wait until then?
We're having a joint meeting with the commissioners, but there will be another guest as well, another board will be there, the Kannapolis City School Board, and it will not be a very perfect, it will not be the type of venue that we could have a discussion like this.
So, so if we go bigger school, say we go 600, and we got 320 kids now, so we're gonna be looking for students. So we're gonna be tasked to bring them from somewhere. And I guess that could be STEM, there's all kinds, yeah, to help, to fill those seats, which I think satisfies the immediate need for the Royal Oaks school, and we can look at ways to grow that, those empty seats.
How many, how many's in Beverly Hills right now? I mean, not Beverly, yeah, Beverly Hills.
361.
361. See, that's almost what you're talking about. If we do, because there's only three something at there right now.
324. 324 at Royal Oaks, based on this chart that Mr. Walter did for us.
I'm ready to go. I'm go for it. I'd make a motion to do that. I say, what about, how about 625? Could you give me 625? Do I hear 625? I'm ready to, I'm making a motion to do 625. Could we get 625 on it? That would be kind of, could you think you'd do 625?
Well, what we can do is study it and then get as many changes as we can.
Study it. I say study it. I'm making a motion to study it and let's go with it. Do you second that, Tim?
I'll say yes.
Let's go with it. I got two, I got two votes.
I just need a very coherent motion. Rather than just, I'm gonna make a motion to study it.
I got a motion to second.
So, Ms. Carpenter, do you need someone to help you wordsmith this one?
Yeah, wordsmith it, and I got a second, I got Tim the second.
All right, Ms. Carpenter is making a motion to study the Royal Oaks and program it for as many as 625 down.
Yeah, and do the GRT on the side to get it moving so we can get, have in hand by our date. So we can be, you know, get the commissioners what they need.
So it'd be to perform the necessary engineering and [inaudible].
Engineering, whatever we need so they can have, so they could have whatever they need by that date for the bond. And this is on site, you know, for the site. And Rob, I'm not forgetting you, I mean, you know, we still need to look at this, I'm not forgetting what you said, but we gotta do something with this bond money. I don't wanna lose it or knock it off a year, so.
Just don't see where the money's coming from, but we'll have that discussion with the commissioners next week.
Right, and right now, the commissioners don't know where the money, they have got to, a bigger pie that they've gotta worry about.
You're saying if we build a 600-seat school at that site, you can keep the students at the location while you're building that school? I don't, how is that possible?
We did some overlays where we did a, we'll say, a large elementary school, and we were able to keep it off of the construction. And we were able to keep it off of the construction, I'm sorry, off of the existing buildings. So the two can coexist, we do have to work out.
You just don't, if you have to do road improvements or something to that effect, that, that just, that doesn't seem like that's a possibility.
Yeah, so it's a very preliminary study. What we do have to also work into is, is access to the site that I mentioned earlier. We also have to look at where the water's coming from, where the sewer is, that we have access for those things. We don't have the, the survey, so survey won't tell us a great deal. And from Ms. Carpenter's motion, you know, that would get that ball rolling.
Last thing on that, if we can't keep the students there, what do we do with them?
Well, two options. Well, let me say really one option. That is to relocate mobile classrooms onto the same site and create a, basically, an area where the, where the school would function, you know, in mobile classrooms. That's the worst case. That's really if we were, you know, demolishing, you know, major portions of the campus while they were on it. So there are.
Still have the road issue.
I'm sorry?
Still have the road improvement issues.
Well, and of course, we have to talk with those zoning officials, with the city of Kannapolis and, and, and those folks to see what their requirements are going to be. We've already talked to NC DOT. They're going to defer to the, to the city. And when we're looking at possibly a four hundred student school, certainly the impact is not that substantial. So we'll see what, what the reaction is for a larger school.
Yeah, I would prefer that, that the, the motion be that it, we does, direct Dave to begin design work on the largest school possible at that site. And then you can investigate, because if it's, if it's, and I, I would think, well, the first early things you need to do before we spend a lot of money on architect fees is, is to get the answer on the road improvements. Because Rob's absolutely right, that road is not designed for, you know, as a major thoroughfare. And if we're going to suddenly bring six hundred students in instead of three hundred and something, that, that could make a big difference. And we've seen how much road improvements can bump up the cost of a project at Odell. So that, that, that would be my one request. I mean, hey, I mean, if we get seven hundred in, then, you know, that, that's going to be seventy-five additional seats that are cost-effective rate.
Dr. Shepherd?
Just want to say that in, in trying to keep this on schedule with the March nineteenth date of beginning construction, because that's the earliest the money from the referendum is available to us. I feel as if, if you're looking at the Royal Oaks site, then we can, the current site, then we can afford to spend some time studying these things. But if you're leaning toward going off-site, it is extremely critical that we move as quickly as we can in order to meet that deadline. So I'm, I'm hearing you tonight all saying that you feel that that site, or not all, some, most, maybe, that site is preferable. If that's the case, then I think we can, and I'm obligating Dave to this, but that we can afford some time to study and then still meet that deadline. Is that fair?
That's correct, yep.
Okay. But if you're going off-site, then we need to know pretty soon, or we're going to miss that deadline.
Board members, Ms., Mrs. Carpenter has made a motion and it's been revised. So let me read this motion that I will attribute to Ms. Carpenter. And that is to study the Royal Oaks Elementary School programming for the largest possible school to place on the site and to perform the necessary engineering surveys for the site as well as looking at the road improvements possibly that would be involved in this, in the programming that you come to. What would you say, due diligence?
Due diligence for the site.
Okay, so just say the due diligence?
Due diligence for the site.
Thank you.
Within that, keeping the kids there on the side.
Perhaps we could add to, that you would come back with a report to the board on your findings at the earliest possible date? Sorry.
We could add that you would come back to the board with your findings at the earliest possible date.
And can you second any of that? You, I kept your second.
All right, I'm, I'm still playing with the words, folks. All right, so.
Is there any cost associated with this motion?
Mr. Burnett, are there any significant costs, or what are we looking at?
If we're looking at due diligence, you know, we can be in the neighborhood of thirty thousand dollars. But the question is, are you all looking at the prototype, the Odell prototype, and which comes with the architect selection? At which point, you know, we kind of know what direction we're heading in? Is that, is that the?
Well, that, that's what I sort of wanted to address. So according to Dr. Shepherd, that the, the plan that takes the least amount of time is what we're telling Dave to pursue now. Instead of any plan other than the plan that takes the least amount of time, we're just foregoing. So it seems like there's, if, if there's a plan that doesn't take as much time, then why implement it now? If there's another plan that, that we could pursue, that maybe doesn't have any fees associated with it, then maybe at some point in the near future, we could decide that plan's not feasible. Then we could go ahead with that short-time plan that doesn't take as much time. So it seems like we kind of got our, our timelines in reverse, but that's just sort of my way of thinking. If, if we have a compressed timeline on one, let's get going on that one. But where, where am I off, where am I off there?
So are, are you suggesting you'd like, like us to, to, to look at some alternate sites before telling Dave to go ahead and start spending money evaluating the Royal Oaks?
We have a, we have a motion that we're going to be working on. Let's work this motion. If it gets passed, then, then we'll move on. If it doesn't get passed, then we'll come back and have this.
Okay, what are the fees associated with this motion?
And you said that it was in the neighborhood of due diligence was thirty thousand dollars? Okay. So due diligence with the, what do you call it? Yeah.
That would be doing some geo, I mean.
It would be serving. Yes, that won't cost anything. That'll be a discussion with the city.
That's to do the due diligence, so that he can, so he's going to spend a little bit of money to research this option. So here's what we have. We have a, we have a, a motion to study the Royal Oaks Elementary School programming for the largest possible school to place on the site, performing due diligence for the site while not disturbing the existing programming. And we approve somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty thousand dollars.
Exceeds.
Approve expense not to exceed thirty thousand.
Okay. Prove, approval of NTE, not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. All right? I have Ms. Carpenter.
Oh, man. I think we just need to make sure our finance officers is what we've got.
So we do not have any dollars specifically allocated to the Royal Oaks project, although the bond has passed. Those funds are not available to us. So we have to make a request to the county to spend that thirty thousand dollars or whatever you're attempting to approve.
Could I ask another question? I'm sorry. Have we ever had a site that we've designated as a building site, but then the geo, whatever that Carolyn was, was talking about, comes back and it's not suitable, and we decide not to build on that site? How often does that happen? It seems like we've built on some pretty terrible sites, and I can just name a few. I'm not saying we don't need to do due diligence on this, but spending money on it just seems like a, a waste.
So the, the, one of the purposes of performing the due diligence would be to confirm the suitability of the site. So we would do geotechnical subsurface, you know, borings. And if we hit rock everywhere, and if we determined that the cost of that was going to be enormous, certainly it could be a recommendation from us to walk away from that site and to explore other sites. So what the due diligence would include would be surveys of the property, geotechnical work, phase-one site assessment. And that's a tool to confirm that this is a, a, a site that we want to develop.
If we're going to build on that site, then you're going to have to do those things anyway. So we're just getting ahead of the game.
So would it, would, Vince, would, would you come on board with the resolution if we also added something about asking Mr. Burnett to do some scouting for alternative sites? And, you know, that, that could handle up to four, eight hundred students?
Well, that would be a.
All right, so I, I make.
Why don't we just finish this motion? And then we can add that motion.
No, we wanted to do it as a combined. So I want to, so I'm making a motion to amend the motion.
Okay, we have an amendment to the motion.
To, to also ask our construction director to do a survey of, of sites in the proximity of Royal Oaks and Beverly Hills Elementary School to look, that could accommodate a school of up to eight hundred stu- six to eight hundred.
Could you revise that to say our site committee?
Oh, okay, site, so, yes.
Because we have Carolyn's on that and, and then the county has folks that are also involved with that. So to perform a.
But it needs to be quick. When you say committee, it sounds like it's something that's going to take a long time, but.
I'll second that, but it seems contradictory to what Carolyn was proposing initially.
Yeah, but time-wise and money-wise, I mean, you're, as they just mentioned, everything around there is commercial. So you're, you're.
So the, 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 the reason that we would do this is it now gets us on two tracks. So if Dave's investigation of the current Royal Oaks site puts up a big red stop sign, we're at least working on an alternative plan that would keep us moving towards that March twenty sixteen date. So that, that would be the, the motivation for, for doing this.
Identifying buildable sites would probably be a good idea anyway, in, in that general area, I think, if we expand it to go up.
Boy, that's a long motion.
Maybe east of.
All right, folks, I now have this amended a motion, which is to perform a survey of available sites that could support the programming of the proposed Royal Oaks Elementary.
Are you going to vote on the amended motion before you vote on mine, or are you putting it in?
Yeah, well, I have to do that first.
Yeah, you do.
Yeah, so Jeff Phillips made that and.
It's just part of his. Rob seconded it.
Rob seconded that?
Right.
Okay. All right, so first thing we're going to vote on is this, okay. We're going to vote on this amended, amendment to the original motion. The amendment is to perform a survey of available sites that could support the programming of the proposed Royal, Royal Oaks Elementary School. And, okay, so we have a first, we have Dr. Phillips making the motion, Rob Walter seconding it. So all in favor of this motion, say aye. Oppose? All right, motion carries. Seven zero now. This amendment is, goes to the existing motion, which is out there with Carolyn and with Tim Fur, being the second on it. The motion is that to study the Royal Oaks Elementary School programming for the largest possible school for the site, performing due diligence for the site while not disturbing the existing programming. And we approved, we would like to approve a not-to-exceed-of-thirty-thousand-dollar request to the commissioners. Is that who we have to do?
But, and too, I wanted to say that, that making sure that children get to stay on site.
I did say that. Yeah, I said, due diligence for the site while not disturbing the existing programming.
That's me.
Okay. The approval of not-to-exceed-of-thirty-thousand-dollar request to the Board of Commissioners to begin the work. Then the amended amendment to the motion also includes simultaneously, we will perform a survey of available sites that could support the programming of the proposed Royal Oaks Elementary School. Or proposed programming of the Royal Oaks Elementary School. How's that, proposed programming? All right, is that sufficient? Can we work with that? All right. Board members, we have a motion. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? All right, so we are moving forward. Dave, we gave you a lot of work to do, I'm sorry. Give Jonathan a call and we'll move this forward. Carolyn, get ready.
Now, does, could we talk about selection of architect? Or is that a different discussion altogether? I would like for an RFQ to be discussed, because I've had some discussions about taking a prototype plan and then turning it to a one-off based on the size of the program. If you're moving from a thousand core capacity to a four hundred, six hundred, I just can't see how leaving, assuming that there is some cost savings, like, like Rob has pointed out over time, in reducing that program, I, I just, I'm not seeing those cost savings realized. So I feel like maybe an RFQ for an architectural firm might be in order, since we're doing a one-off building, no matter what we're doing. It's not a thousand-capacity building unless we go find a twenty-five-acre site somewhere. Is that part, is this part of the discussion or somewhere else?
This was not a part of this discussion. We need Mr. Burnett to do this study. That would be a completely separate discussion and was not a part of this, this meeting tonight. We'll, we'll have to have another discussion about that. But I will say that all of us got a timeline from Mr. Burnett this weekend about what the impacts to the timing are if we were to go out for RFQ and rather than using a prototype that we already have. It's, it's fair to say that we'll miss the date.
I disagree.
And that was, that was, because now you have to go through the whole RFQ process, which adds time to the process. And, but I think we'll have to have that, another discussion on that in, in a bit. Let's move on to some other things. We can come back and revisit this if we can move forward with this. I'll put this at the end here. And if we have some time, we'll try to talk about it. But I'm not prepared for it, and I don't believe, are you prepared to have that discussion later today? Okay, well, we'll, we'll move that to the end. Board members, I'll need a motion once we get there. All right, let's move forward now that we've taken care of the Royal Oaks. We're now on the request for supplemental funding from the county commissioners for Mount Pleasant Middle School replacement. There's really not a lot of discussion to be had on the actual funding piece. I've talked with the commissioners and they're not prepared to, to talk about this at this point, because they have so many projects they're having to worry about and trying to bundle together the different requests from RCCC, from Kannapolis City Schools, and the two schools that we have. So they're in the midst of trying to figure out where the capital dollars are going to come from and how they're going to allocate monies for these projects. They asked if we would delay this decision or table this particular item. So if you want to have discussion, I'd be glad to open the floor for this discussion about anything else that you have about Mount Pleasant Middle School. If not, we can, I would need a motion to table this until next meeting.
We have a little bit of a discussion?
Yes.
So the number that we're, you showed, you shared with them the numbers that we got last week, is that right?
Yes, we shared the numbers that we received at the retreat. All of you are familiar with the thirty-six million, the thirty-six million. All of you are familiar with the thirty-six million dollar number that we...
Thirty-six, but that did not include the athletic comp, the refurbishment of the stadium?
Yes, and that's, that was always a separate issue, the refurbishment of the whole stadium.
Okay, well, I had a request that that would be included in our, in our ask to the county commissioners.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know if you're, right now, we were asking for an additional four hundred thousand to do the stadium grandstands.
It certainly depends on what the scope is. To do all of the repairs that were identified, you know, that was close to one point two million.
Right, we were trying to reduce that scope.
Right. I think it was in the four hundred and change, four hundred and fifty thousand dollar neighborhood.
Yeah, okay. So, any more discussions?
So did the commissioners give you a sense of when they felt they would be ready? Or maybe that's a question we can ask at our joint meeting next week?
Well, right now, I believe the county staff, the way Mr. Downs communicated to Dr. Shepherd and I, was the county staff's trying to piece all this information together, and they're trying to come up with a plan that they can share with the commissioners. So they are not in prepared, they're hopefully gonna do that in the next several weeks. So they told us not to stop the design or stop our progress on Mount Pleasant, but right now, they didn't want us to come forward with a request because they're not in a position to give us any information. And so it would be premature for us to come forward with this request for funds, but...
So this needs to be put in our thing for next month, Vince?
Yeah, this needs to be tabled, if you don't mind.
So we need to put it on our work session or our business meeting?
Well, we can put it on our work session, and then we can either put it on the consent agenda or on the action agenda like we normally do. Hopefully by then, we will have more information from our commissioners.
Do we put on our action for next?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it'll be in the work session, and then we'll make a decision at that point. So, board members...
Rob has another question.
Yes, Rob.
The purpose of putting, asking this month was to what, to move the project forward, is that right?
That's correct.
So how, what does a delay cost, what is happening here with it?
So certainly, the timing was that we would be in front of the county commissioners at the March meeting cycle. We are hoping to finish the design effort and then advertise and go out to bid. So it sounds as though we may be on an April cycle for the commissioners if that is resolved by that time.
So I think what we experienced today was the county manager saying that when we moved from twenty, whatever, twenty-two to thirty-one, with everything included now, I think the number was closer to thirty-six, that his plan for how he would organize financing or funding for that changed. And I think what he's asking is that we give him additional time to work this out. So I would like for you to table this until your March set of meetings and let us determine which one and when to bring that back to you, and then allow the chairman and I to continue to work with Mr. Morris and Mr. Downs. Because I really sensed a strong desire to work with us, and they reiterated in the meeting today, yes, we're building a new middle school in Mount Pleasant. There's no doubt about that. It's just that they've got some things to work out, and we don't want to get ahead of them in the process. We want to be moving along with them. So if you would consider moving this to your March meeting, and then I will continue to work with the ones I mentioned to make this move forward.
I would make a motion to table it to our March, a formal motion to table it to our March meeting.
Second.
Can I, just before we do that, can I, I wanted to ask Dave one more question. So the estimate that you gave us at the retreat was based on the construction documents, is that correct? And then...
The design development.
Oh, the design development, construction documents, when will they be ready with an updated estimate?
It's in the neighborhood of the third week of February.
Third week of February. So by the time we come back to our next meeting, we, we'll have a more, hopefully, accurate number, whether it's higher or lower or right on it, at least we can have more confidence in that number.
That's right.
I wanted to, I mean, there's also an agenda item, I guess, with them for the closure of North Drive, is that approved? Where is that, what is the status of that?
Sure. Scheduled public hearings for the county, February sixteenth, and for the town in Mount Pleasant, March second, if that's a Monday. Those two boards have those two events scheduled, and we aren't anticipating any issues.
Yeah, that would really work out, too, so we'll know what the status of that is before we do anything.
That turns out to be negative, we got a problem, so...
Yeah.
Will those boards take action at those times? Or those, I mean, or...
That has been the expectation. The Board of Transportation, NCDOT, we had expected that they were going to view their board item last week, but it's actually gonna be on their March agenda item. So it could be that maybe one of the boards wants to wait until the Board of Transportation. We're not sure about that. It's early to determine whether that's a need.
Well, the left hand's got to know what the right hand is doing throughout this whole process, and I appreciate you coordinating all these different agencies and entities as best as you can. But I sense that sometimes different agencies are working on their own timelines and own schedules as opposed to kind of coordinating all toward one, one goal. My only question is, is our action to table this for a month going to throw off any other schedules or timelines by that month?
I was just gonna ask...
Can we recoup that month at some future date?
I was gonna ask about timeline, maybe it'll help answer some of your questions. When you get construction documents, third week of February, what are you anticipating to get, the next process is bidding, correct?
So, third week of February is when the estimator is going to provide a sixty percent construction documents estimate. We still have to finish the design effort, the architects, that is, and we have to go through the review process, agency review. Ideally, we get their comments back, we respond to those comments, incorporate those comments so that we don't have any change orders. But that's a, that's a, sometimes that's a luxury. If we feel that it is in our best need to go out to bid prior to incorporating those comments, you know, we do it and we get those comments back, we see what the damage is, we incorporate that, and that could be, worst case, be a change order.
And when did the design start on this project? That was probably pre-me, but, does anybody remember?
It was early summer.
Sometime over the summer, early summer.
I believe it was around June or so, wasn't it?
June, July.
We signed the contract, or actually, we, actually, the design actually, oh, no, I'm thinking of Odell, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, I think...
Yeah, I think it was more late, July-ish.
It was a little bit later, didn't we have a drop dead date of some type in November when we were evaluating the other, the proposal that we had received?
I can confirm it, but I do believe it was in the summertime.
Yeah. Board members, we have, we have a motion to table the funding request for Mount Pleasant Middle School until the March meetings. Carolyn Carpenter made the motion, David Harrison seconded it. Is there any more discussion on this specific motion? If not, all in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Alright, we'll move forward to the legislative agenda item. Board members. Have each of you taken time to go through this? And if so, are there any comments or questions about our current resolution for our legislators?
Move to adopt.
Move to adopt.
Mr. Harrison moves to adopt.
This was not a priority list, it was just a list, right?
No, yeah, it was not listed in any specific priority, I believe that...
I want to make that clear.
It got put in alphabetical order, and that's the only way you see it right now, it's presented in alphabetical order. So, Mr. Harrison has moved.
I'll second that.
Dr. Phillips has seconded it. Any more discussion on this? All in favor of the resolution for our legislative agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Alright, board members, we have, I need a, I need a motion to add the RFQ discussion to the agenda.
So moved.
David Harrison makes the motion.
I'll second it.
Jeff Phillips seconds it. All in favor of, or does there any more discussion on this? So all in favor of adding the RFQ discussion to the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so now we can have the floors open for some discussion on this topic. Are there comments?
I'll jump in, sir.
Alright, Mr. Harrison?
So, from what Dr. Shepherd was saying earlier, it seems like we are on a, an aggressive timeline and that we need to adhere to and stick to the timeline as it is without making a comment about the rightness or wrongness one way or the other about an RFQ. What would going in an RFQ direction do to the timeline that we very strongly need to remain on? I hope I'm asking a salient question there, but how long does a RFQ take and what, what kind of change would it make to our current schedule?
Certainly, the first thing we have to do is develop the RFQ, then we will announce the RFQ newspapers. Then we have to allow time for the firms to put together their response. I would expect that to be about three weeks, and I would say that would be a minimum. We have to review those responses, we'll have the committee review those. If there's going to be interviews, then we have to schedule those interviews. You really need to allow a minimum of one week notice so that firms, they've got schedules, they've got things going on. But we don't have too much time, so a minimum of an additional week for that. And I'm assuming that, well, you don't have time to create a new school from scratch, so it would have to be, you know, some type of a prototype where we've got a pretty good head start, you know, on it. And it, but from, from that time, we then need to go to the board and award the project, so we have to get in that meeting cycle. Then if that's agreed, either we can then do the contract negotiation and come back the following meeting cycle, or we can kind of hedge the bets and try to negotiate, you know, beforehand and do an architect selection and, and contract at the same time.
A month, two months, three months?
In the neighborhood of three to four months.
Three to four months?
Well, RFQ, develop it, advertise.
In the real world, yeah, which I appreciate, I understand.
Yeah.
Where you're coming from.
It could be, it certainly could be in that neighborhood of three months.
But, let's get that way.
Could be four.
Does it have to be, it can be simultaneous, though, I think?
Certainly, so, yes, to do the award and the contract at the same, same night is certainly possible. And, and so that's really your best opportunity, you know, to consolidate and have those run parallel tracks.
Alright, you can give a good example. How long did it take us to do it for Odell?
Well, let's see, I believe it was, it was actually a while. We may have started that in November, and I think the board may have approved that in February or March timeframe.
I'm just curious, I can't remember. I mean, I know we reviewed, we looked through some of them and...
Yeah, I know our RFQ, that now that I'm thinking about it, our RFQ was dated in October.
Was it?
And I think that the award was, was much later, it was in the February timeframe.
I remember us going through some of them, and I know that, that a lot of us had gone to the conference and saw a lot of these people's work, and that's usually in...
November.
November. And a lot of us had seen a lot of these architects' work and stuff when we were at the conference, I know, 'cause a lot of these guys, the ones that had submitted it, 'cause a lot of them had, you know, a lot of their buildings and things there.
So we approved it in February.
Okay.
I guess my other comments would be, if we, if we choose to go with Mosley, again, that's the quickest option available. Right, so that's the, that takes the least amount of time possible. But if there's somebody out there that can better suit our needs, we won't know about it if we don't act quickly or at least investigate that process. So if we investigate that process, then we can, we can work right up until the point where we can choose Mosley, and that's our quickest option. So here again, it's kind of the same as investigating the land issue. If we don't look, then, you know, I've heard several times that we didn't realize the cost savings that we thought we were by changing from a K-5 building to a 3-5 building, and now the, we reduced the core capacity by sixty percent, and then yet the costs are only down, you know, a small margin. So it just, to me, looking at the numbers, maybe I'm just too, too much of a simple man, and sometimes I like to simplify things. If the numbers don't add up, I'd just like to see if there's another option. If they don't add up for somebody else, or if they're telling us the timeline is the same, then that's fine. We can use that time to investigate that and then go with Mosley if it's, you know, if we get right up to that time, that hard deadline, I guess you could say.
Dr. Phillips?
Well, I, as I understand it, if we go out and request for qualifications, we, we do not ask them, how much can you build a four-hundred-student school for?
It's not a bid.
Right, they can't, it's not a bid. So we will not know, even if we select somebody that looks like, wow, this is great, they've done three other schools just like this, we won't know whether that's going to be, really be at a cost that we want it to be. I mean, my reaction is, custom-built homes are always more expensive than cookie-cutter homes. I mean, that's just the way it is, because you custom-build them. And so unless somebody else has an off-the-shelf design that was in the timeframe when the codes are as they are today, there's going to be customization. So there's going to be, you know, some design fees involved. I don't know, maybe you could...
Would any of our older designs be usable?
That was, actually, I looked at what the last time, the last architect selection. And it, so that process went through, we did the advertisement, we reviewed the qualifications, and we did look at prototypes, and that the, the committee really had ranked, you know, the architects, and, you know, at that time, for everything that the board was looking at, you know, Mosley was the first choice. So that effort was done recently, it was a year, a year and, a year ago.
Really, qualification-wise, would it change that much from what we asked for the last time? I mean, RFQ...
Certainly, I don't want to reinvent the wheel and as far as developing RFQ.
I mean, some of it would maybe be, you know, what we were looking for, core capacity may change some, dah dah dah, but some of the stuff will still be basically the same, so we won't have to, as you say, reinvent the wheel. So some of that would be, so we're probably gonna end up getting a lot of the same architects that we got before. There's usually, I would say, five, maybe, that, I mean, I've done this, I've done this four or five times, and usually it's the same four or five that maybe always seems to rise to the top. So we're probably gonna see those same ones, because I've sit on the selection committee, or when I say that. 'cause I was involved with, um, a couple of the elementary schools when we had our board kind of select the committees to kind of sit on the, the, the building committees. And it seems like it's been four or five that's always been-
A lot of the same ones.
The same type, especially with elementary schools. So I bet it'll be the same way, but I have no problem if, as long as it doesn't slow us down, I want to, as I say, move forward, so.
Given that there's only the, the four or five that are constantly bidding, would that not in, speed the, the timeline up? I mean, it's not like we're-
I know, there's many, many will respond, 20, 25 firms will respond. And, and we-
When I say that, we have our committees kind of look at it, and when I say that, with what we're looking for, it just seems like, but our committee kind of narrows it down to see, style-wise, what we're looking for, it seems like it always narrows down, that we've got five to six, and it seems like it's always those same ones that we kind of draw ourselves to. And now, it may be wrong, but it just seems like that way. But it's kind of the style or what our buildings kind of seem like we like, or, or it, it just seems that way. Now, but some other ones may have come out, I don't know, I, I can't say that, but it just seems like it's that way. But we, we do, we have had our committees that look at them, but that could change. You're on here, you may see something that I don't see.
Dr. Shepherd?
In addition to expediting things, which is what we were trying to do, and also believing that if we were to, in some way, be able to clone the current structure, it might reduce the cost. Something I want us to be sensitive to is the perception, I know the reality won't be there, because I, I trust the decision you'll make, but the perception that we need to design something less for this Royal Oaks structure. Now, again, perception than we are for Odell. For instance, if we were to use the Odell then for the, not the Royal Oaks, but the next elementary school, I think we, we could lead the community to believe that we're trying to do less for that community, Royal Oaks community, by going with a different architect, trying to design something less. And I want to be very careful with that, because, um, that's a community that historically has, or historically as in the last seven years until just recently, has not spoken up for itself. And, uh, so I'll just bring that to the, the discussion.
Mr. Harrison, did you have a comment?
Only, only that I'm, um, uneasy with, um, the remote possibility or the prospect of getting off schedule, and that four months to me, um, could have ramifications down the line that... We can't open a school in, in October, can we? Don't answer that question, I don't think we should, but I wouldn't want to throw, uh, while we're talking about metaphors and cliches, I wouldn't want to throw monkey wrench in this. None of these architect companies can jump through hoops, how many more cliches would you like me to come up with? It, it just seems, short notice to discuss this. There'll be projects in the future where we can have this discussion and, and plan out that option. But, um, I want the, the Royal Oaks facility to open on schedule, and, and to me, four months, whether, I mean, it might be a perfectly, uh, uh, real-world, uh, length of time. I'm terribly worried that it would, uh, alter the ultimate schedule of accomplishing what we've set out and committed to do for Royal Oaks. I would think that we could have this discussion for other, other projects in the future, but that this project needs to stay on schedule and not, um, get thrown off the schedule. Certainly not at this phase of things.
Given that it wasn't on the agenda tonight, then, and so, we, um, could theoretically pick up one month if we decided to go that route, just by deciding to go out for, um, ask for RFQs or advertise or whatever that process might be. We haven't decided on a architect, it was, um, not in the agenda, so I guess we would have decided on that possibly next meeting, the meeting after that, maybe May, June. You know, whenever that, that time came to decide that architect, between now and then, we could at least investigate what's, what else is out there. If we choose not to do that, that's, that's fine, that's what we choose to do, but I just want to at least have that discussion like we're having, so that we don't get to June and say, okay, now we have to choose Mosley, and don't realize any savings, like the project at Odell didn't realize any savings.
I, I think that's an unfair statement to the architect. We do not know what, you know, there, there's been an increase in cost of building. We do not know what the original K5 design would have cost if it had gone out for bid. So we cannot say that the, the savings did not materialize. The building that we are building now does not include bathrooms and, and larger-sized rooms that you have for kindergarten and first grade, so it by definition must be cheaper. And I think, yeah, let's, let's be careful where we start. If, if we start bashing architects, then architects aren't going to want to work for us, so we need to be careful there. The other thing is, Dave, you said, you were talking about how much, how much time it takes to go out for RFQs and review them, but in the timeline you sent us, that's not what is the, the impact. It's that the design phase takes so much longer, because, because you're, you're not just photocopying, uh, room designs, you're completely redoing them, so I, to me, it's, it's not how much time will it take to go out and get the RFQs, it's how much time will it take to convert, uh, our, our concept and their concepts into a design?
If you're redoing, that's not a prototype then. I'm, I'm sorry, if you're redoing, then that's not a prototype, then we're, we're doing a one-off, which is fine. We're doing a one-off school.
Well, let me have a conversation. Our, we have standards that we sent to the, to the architect that they use, so no matter who gets the next job, if we were to go out for an RFQ, they would use the standards that Carveras County has. In this, in this 10.2 that we put out tonight, we were talking about programming the building using the existing model that we had developed with Mosley on, or used as the prototype. Now, the prototype is nothing more than a basic layout, but you have to do some site adaptions, depending on how the, how the building is laid out. The architect's going to have to adhere to our building standards, no matter what they are, how we decide we want the block walls, how we want the sheet rock done in the hallways, what kind of lock sets we want, you know, down to the intimate detail, and there's a very large document that Dave issues to each of them to make sure that they have our standards, because our standards are different from Charlotte Meks standards, and they have a lot more robust requirements in a lot of their buildings that we don't have. Dave, you and I were having a conversation today about how much building costs were going up, and I believe you said that you had a conversation with some folks up in Wake County. Can you share that with the board, so that they can kind of get a, a real idea of where we're headed on costs and what's happened to Wake County, because they've experienced a huge, huge increase in costs, and these increasing costs are because of the building design, there's a whole nother factor going on, and it's simple economics, we had an economics professor here, and he would tell us about supply and demand, and that's what's happening to us, or happening to a lot of the school systems right now. Can you share what you were, what you found out today?
Yes, uh, over the last four to six months, they've seen a tremendous increase in, in their costs. First, it was site where they noticed it, it was a spike, what they hoped was a spike, uh, of upwards of 15% on the site cost. More recently, um, they've seen the, the increase on the, on the building side. So they said really over the last four to six months that they've seen a 20% increase in their construction costs, that's site and building. That's a significant increase. And, and Wake County's not alone, uh, there's other, uh, school systems around the country that are reporting, you know, such increases, uh, I saw one that was 44%. Those are big projects, I'm sorry, big programs, you know, that are going on. The issue is that, uh, certainly, uh, this particular industry has not rebounded like, uh, other industries may have. The, uh, the supply, uh, the workforce is not there, um, so the contractors building capacity is not what it used to be. So, but the demand for projects has increased, so the contractors are in a really good position of being able to really set higher, you know, numbers to it. If they don't get it, another bid project is going to be coming up, uh, right behind it, and they can still, you know, try for that one and, and still have the high, higher numbers. And the Wake County folks were saying, really, don't try to make sense of it, um, it's, really, they, they can do this, because that opportunity is there, it's a pent-up, um, you know, as far as the industry goes, for years. You know, they were bidding things at, at, at cost, you know, maybe even below cost, trying to survive. And that, uh, you know, now the, the table is turned a bit, um, and that opportunity for them to try to make up, uh, some is, is, is apparently there. So Wake County is saying, you know, they've, they've seen a, you know, market increase of upwards of 20%.
Thank you, Dave. Board members, I believe we've had enough discussion about this, I need a motion to deal with this issue. So I'm looking for a motion, so that we can put this RFQ to rest. Well, we added it to the agenda, so now it's here, and, uh, I want to have a motion that we either proceed with the, looking for an RFQ, or proceed with the architect that, and the prototype that we are already using. All right, I have a motion to proceed with the current architect and the prototype that we're using. Is there a second?
I will second.
All in favor, uh, do we have any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, oh, Mr. Walden?
If you did an RFP, can you say in there how long it would take to design the school? I mean, if you said you're looking for somebody who could design a school in six months, can that be part of a-
Certainly. And, and, uh, what you will, uh, what you'll see on that is, you know, the fee structure's going to represent, is going to reflect whatever kind of limitations we're putting on it, so. Also, what's going to be out of their control is, uh, the authorities having jurisdiction, you know, the, the review agencies and things like that, so you won't be able to get that, uh-
Now, was that part of your timeline, or was that in addition to your timeline?
Well, you can tell them you want it completed within a certain amount of time, too. Because you can say, I want that school completed by, excuse me, because you can tell them, I want that school completed by, blank date, correct?
That's, that's correct. The, uh, the review period was on the timeline. What, uh, what we do expect for a, a brand-new design, you know, was eight to nine months for that. There's a lot of give and take, a lot of, um, design effort review, design effort review, design effort review, you know, for the new, for the new school. What, uh, what we also would be expecting is, you know, um, you'd be having a schematic design phase, maybe even a programming phase, but schematic design phase. The efficiencies and what you skip, you know, with going with the prototype, is typically, you don't have that schematic design phase, if that helps.
Okay. Board members, we have a motion. Is there any more discussion on this motion? The motion is to proceed with the current architect and the prototype that we have for Odell School and use that for the basis of our Royal Oaks Elementary School. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? One, only one, okay. All right, six to one, motion carries, so we will proceed with our current architect on this particular project. We will be going and looking at others later on, but, you know, that's, once we get some approvals there. All right. Board members, it's time to go into closed session, and I'll need a motion to convene in closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318 dot 11A3 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged, and pursuant to General Statute 143-318 dot 11A6 to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, a charge, grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee pursuant to General Statute 115C-319 through 21. All in, I need a, um-
Do we also-
A motion?
Given the, um, motion that we had on Royal Oaks, do we also need to add this about, um, asking our staff to look at land, or is that... Do you, do you need that, Dave, or not?
I thought that was in our amended motion, was it not? When I amended the motion-
This is, this is for closed session motion, the, the attorney said.
That, you need to add that if you want to give specific instruction regarding, um, potential-
Properties.
Areas, not costs and so forth.
All right, well, I'll add that in there. In addition to what I just said, we're also going to establish or instruct a public body's staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating the price and other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase, option, exchange, or lease. Do I have a motion to go into closed session? Carolyn made a motion, do I have a second? David Harrison seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're now in closed session. Thank you, everyone.